Okay, I call this the Village of Green Hills Council Meeting to order for August 22, 2023. Clerk call the roll.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Ms. Walter.
Here.
Ms. Osman Nooglu.
Here.
Ms. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Ms. Hermes.
Here.
Mr. Halter.
Here.
All right, I have a prayer by Maria Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us together this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you also to teach us to be generous so we may understand other different points of view and listen to them. This is a time to thank you, Lord, for all thy bounties, one of them coming, one of them going. Thank you, Lord, for the service that Chief Fertleman has done for the village of Green Hills. Keep him and his family safe for the years to come. Please welcome our new chief and protect him and his family. Please also make sure that all our officers and volunteer fire department always come home safe after a call. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have a change to add to our ordinances or resolutions. We've got a resolution number 2023 dash 14 dash SNS to put on the agenda later. Do we need to do anything other than that?
You could make a motion to add that to the agenda.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that's been added. The next thing is we have the approval of minutes of previous meetings, the council meeting June 27th, July 25th, and of August, the work session of August the 8th. If there are no changes to be made, the minutes shall stand approved. We have public presentation. We have Paula Bram Hager, the director of the Sensei Public Library here to speak with us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council for giving me the time. I think you all know Jennifer Whitehead, who is our local Green Hills branch librarian. She has some information that I just was hoping to leave with all of you. I appreciate the time. I know you have a busy schedule today, so I'll just be as brief as I can. I'm going out throughout the county to talk to everyone about what's been going on with the library. Probably you saw, you see Jennifer quite a bit when she comes, and I've already heard great things about her and the staff at your local Green Hills branch, and I appreciate that very much. We are, of course, a very large county system, 41 locations across the city and county. It's about a million square feet of space. And we have been working on a facility master plan. So in the little packet that Jennifer just gave all of you, there's information there that is, one, a quick executive summary of that facility master plan. I do like to bring it along because I carry it everywhere I go. It's three volumes, so we've worked on it all time. And you can see that mine is coffee stained, so I've been carrying it. It is built on our website, though, when we do try and update it. What you have is the executive summary, so if you don't feel like reading all three volumes, you can take a look at that one, as well as the north central planning zone, which is where Green Hills is. We have so many libraries that we've kind of carved them up into five different planning zones so they're manageable. So you can see in there an assessment of your Green Hills branch, all the surrounding branches, and what our plans are for what we're doing. The dollars for this particular plan are from the 2018 levy that the voters here in Hamilton County passed, and we've been using those to really work hard on our locations. In 2018, when we started the plan, the average age of a building since it had been built or renovated in our library system was about 43 years. We had several that were more than 100 years old. They were not handicap accessible, so you couldn't do steps, you couldn't get into them. I'm proud to say that we have now remedied those. If all of our locations had a ramp or some accessible way to get into them, but we continue to work on the plan. We have an update on our website that gives you all of that information. Walnut Hills is one that some of you may or may not have had a chance to visit, but it's 116 years old and had not really been renovated since it was built, other than we put in some air conditioning because it was so old and did have ducts for air conditioning. And we have now worked on that one, as well as Chrysler, Hyde Park. We're building a new branch up in Forest Park, work with the village there. That one should be opening next year. We've got some work down at our main library. And then one other one that I'd like to mention is in the Dillon Vale Shopping Mall. You may be familiar with that old Deer Park branch. It was a little tiny branch there in that shopping mall. The community let us know that TJ Maxx had moved out of Dillon Vale, so we moved out of the TJ Maxx. We now have about a 25,000 square foot branch over there with great parking. So we continue to do that work, and we are looking at this plan, taking us through 20, 27, 28, then we'll go back out to talk to the community. We also are working on maintenance and other things. We have boilers and HVAC systems at our main library that were from the 1950s. So when they pulled those out, we looked at them, and they really looked like they were from an entirely different generation. When I talk at community council meetings, I always look at all of your faces, and you're sort of like, yes, we know, Paula, because we face the same kinds of infrastructure problems. So I know that you do. And also, one that we've renovated a little bit, we did a refresh, is our Green Township branch, and that is the first branch I worked at in high school in 1990. It's very hard for me to accept that that's now an older branch because it's about my age. So I have great respect for these buildings. They've served us well. But I like to come out to all communities, even those that perhaps don't have a library in their immediate neighborhood, or like Green Hills has a library, but it's not been one that we've been able to get to a full renovation or reexamination of right now in this tenure plan. So you know what we're doing with your tax dollars. And speaking of that, there is a brief couple of slides in there on the library funding landscape that lets you know what our statistics are, how we've been used, and also the kinds of things we face when it comes to funding, including crisis for things like people that are increasingly popular. I think during the pandemic, everybody didn't want to touch their e-reader, and their grandkids or their kids got up, pulled it out, and learned how to use it. So our use has gone through the roof on some of those things as well, and those are not inexpensive items. So I know that you may not entirely be aware of everything that's going on at the library. I know Jennifer comes and talks to you about Green Hills, and I appreciate that very much. But I wanted to come personally and let you know what's happening. I hate to think of people being surprised, and I take tax dollars and stewardship of tax money quite seriously, so I'm going out to see if I can update everyone. And I know you have a lot more fun things to talk about tonight, so I do not want to overstay my welcome, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have for me.
I just wanted to thank you and thank Jennifer. I went to the event last, two weeks ago, and it was great turnout, very interesting. So thank you.
That's great. Those are the kinds of things we love to hear.
Good.
I don't have anything else, so if I can just finish up by saying, both as a representative of the library, but perhaps more important, as a Hamilton County resident and someone who's been in public service for many, many years, thank you all for what you do, serving on the council. I know it's your time, and I know that you get a lot of feedback from the community, and some that you can help folks and sometimes you can't, but I do appreciate what you do, and you are really the better off of our civic life in the county, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have something that is an amen- amenas- yes.
Amenas.
Yes.
Bittersweet.
I'm going to struggle through this also. Our chief is retiring, and we're going to miss him dearly. And I have a proclamation here I'll read before the chief will say a few words. Neil Fertleman, retiring chief of police to the village of Green Hills, has served law enforcement for nearly 48 years and is well-respected by his fellow law enforcement officers, village employees, citizens, and volunteers. Whereas his career began in 1976, serving the city of Hamilton as police cadet, police officer, detective, sergeant, and lieutenant culminating with his appointment to chief of police in 1998, and serving 14 years in the position before retiring in 2012. And in June 2013, was appointed Green Hills Police Chief, where he served the village of Green Hills in an exemplary manner for the next 10 years. And whereas it has been a family tradition of public service with his grandfather having served as fire captain for 33 years, his father as police lieutenant for 34 years, Chief Fertleman's retirement brings his family, total years of continuous public service, to 98 years. And do we have any other member, family members that might change their careers and go into public service?
I think they're welcome.
Maybe one of the granddaughters. Okay. Whereas bringing this extensive experience to the Green Hills Police Department, he continuously demonstrated the values of integrity, honor, respect, excellence, and accountability through continued compliance with the standards of the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, CALEA, ensuring that the Green Hills Police Department, having been awarded the CALEA accreditation in 2007, continued to receive this award annually during his tenure. Whereas under his leadership as Green Hills Police Chief in 2015, Green Hills was identified by, yes, local, what is that?
Your guess is a good one.
Yes. Okay. Something, local niche dot com, as the sixth safest community in the tri-state area and the third safest in Hamilton County. Chief Fertleman implemented multiple community-oriented programs and initiatives to ensure the Green Hills remains a safe place to live, including the Citizens Police Academy, Coffee with the Cops, Cooking with the Cops, GPD Open House, Cookies with the Cops, and Game Time with the GPD. With the community generosity, he developed a police community fund to help residents in need. He has shaped the Green Hills Police Department to be the epitome of professionalism and community-oriented police agencies. Whereas he has been a mentor, leader, friend, jack-of-all-trades, positive force for the police department, village administration, the citizens of Green Hills. The years he has spent as Green Hills Police Chief have resulted in enhancement in the quality of life of the village and the quality of the Green Hills Police Department. Whereas Chief Neil Fertleman took an oath when he was hired, preserve, protect, and defend the codified ordinances of the village of Green Hills, an oath he has never broken. Now therefore be a resolve that I, Mayor David B. Moore, on behalf of the village of Green Hills, do hereby recognize retiring Chief Neil R. Fertleman for his legacy of service in law enforcement to the village of Green Hills, express the deepest appreciation for his dedication and commitment to the citizens of the village of Green Hills and the police department, and extend to Neil R. Fertleman our best wishes in his new post's full-time grandfather.
Wow, that's a tough one to follow. I apologize, it's hard to aim the cameras and not hit my back to somebody, but I stood this spot 10 years ago today and was sworn in, and I can tell you that it went very fast. I came here after spending 37 years at the Hamilton Police Department. 14 is the Hamilton Police Chief, which is the equivalent of 40 years of dog years. A long slug of a fest. But the first thing I did was, when my wife Patty told me this position was open, was I called Avon Kovak, and we hit it off on the phone. We had several meetings, I was interviewed, and I was offered the job. And Avon has been a friend ever since. And immediately after I was appointed, the first text that I got was from Lieutenant Anna Moore, and she said, whatever I can do to help, I will. And she's held that pledge for the last 10 years. When I got here, I thought that this was a bright location for community-oriented policing, and we embarked on all kinds of endeavors, and our officers, how many coolers and jugs of drinks that we called the picnic shaw, or I would hate to count them. But during that time, we had a lot of fun with our residents, and I think all of us came to know them by their names, by their first names, and the years have just flown by. Unfortunately, I've had such a good time, I'm an old man, it's about, and over these 47 years, it's pastime. I'm way past retirement age. It's a crazy profession, so I think that it's time for me to say my thank yous. And my first thank you is to my boss, Avon. She has been phenomenal to work for, and I can't thank her enough for the freedom that she's allowed me to have with the police department. I recall when I got here, I had some concerns about some policies. I went in loaded for bear. I had all kinds of documents, and I said, I've got a concern about this policy, and I want you to read over what my suggestions are. And on this one, I think we really need it. She said, don't know anything about law enforcement, go do your thing. So it's worked pretty well. And I've told Ann many times, had she not been by my side, I would not have stayed here 10 years. But Ann, I truly thank you for all you've done for me and for the agency. Our sergeants are an absolute dichotomy. You've got Tony Patton, who is our longest-serving officer, the most senior member of the department. What is said about Tony is that not only does he know where everybody lives in town, he knows who lived there before then. Tony is a wealth of information, and the guidance he provides is invaluable. On the other hand, you've got a guy that broke out of the hospital just about, Carl Olbrath, who is our newest sergeant and is without a doubt the future of the department. So I think we're in really good hands with supervision. Our investigators are, I'd put them up against any investigative unit anywhere. Brian Johnson, who's been here since 2001, he specializes in a lot of narcotics investigations and is always ready to take the lead on any investigation. Mike Mathis, who has been my friend for many, many years, I remember we had many talks, and we were both police chiefs together, and he said, I just liked it when I was an investigator much better. So as his retirement neared at Springdale, I called him up, and I said, you want to be a detective again? And he said, yeah. And believe me, this community has benefited from the expertise of both of those guys. Our patrol officers, all the way from Andy Moore, who's our senior patrol officer, to our last hire, Daniel Warman, all of these guys are part of, it's just here. I've had the pleasure of commanding, well, the tedious task of commanding a large, large police department, and I can tell you, these guys can run rings around some of the officers in larger departments. Vonda has been at my side. She was my first hire here. I think before I was even hired, but it was pretty close, and she's always the smiling face of the department, and whether you're the bank president or a banker, she treats you the same way, and it's always greeting with a smile. That goes a long way for the character of the department. Mr. Mayor and all of you on council, some of you were here when I was sworn in, some of you have joined council. I couldn't have asked for any more incredible support from all of you. You've been a four-square in supporting us, not only just in philosophy, but also when we needed to take a look at salaries, and I think that you have, because of your actions, we have the caliber of the department than we have today. So it's the best team ever. It's going to be turned over to a really great guy. But I thank our citizens. Our above reproach, we have a few dandies, as we all know, but 99% of our citizens are just unbelievably supportive and helpful, and we couldn't ask for a better group of residents to protect. Without forgetting anyone, my wife. Of over 40 years. Pauline Mathis will tell you, and so will Lisa, that being a police chief's wife is kind of a crazy business. So all the nighttime phone calls and the times when you're trying to talk to me and I'm texting back, I'm interested in the department. I'm very grateful for that. My wonderful daughters Tara, Leah, and two very special little girls, little Thea and little Eloise, are going to be my partners in crime as I get my full-time gratifying. So that's a new role, and I'm going to relish it, and I can't be grateful enough that the next guy you're going to hear from is taking over the reins of this department because he's going to take it to a new level. I'm really excited that Jim will be commanding this. So for all of you that came out tonight, all that has supported me and this department, thank you, and God bless you.
Repeat after me, right, James A. Howard.
I, James A. Howard.
Do somely swear.
Do somely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
And the village of Green Hills.
The village of Green Hills, Ohio.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of the office of police chief.
The duties of the office of police chief.
To which I have become, to have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I stand relieved. Ladies and gentlemen, Green Hills Police Chief, Jim Howard.
I'd just like to first introduce one thank you, and like I said, I don't like turning my back to you, so.
That's fine.
I'd like to introduce my family because if it wasn't for them and their support for my last 30 years and now my next 30 years, you know, I couldn't have done without them. So my son Carson, stand up, Carson. My daughter Brooklyn. My beautiful wife Lisa. Just to give you an idea, it was probably about 15 years ago last week, I was sworn in as chief of police for Delhi Township. Brooklyn, or Carson, was one year old in my arms when I was swearing my oath. Brooklyn was two and a half in Lisa's arms, so I don't think we can duplicate that. I tried. No, I just, I'm so excited. You know, when I decided to retire from Delhi, and I'm going to have to do the same thing, a meeting at our last meeting on the 30th in Delhi, so I know the feelings you're going through. But I wasn't just going to leave for anywhere. I was very particular, and I will tell you what appealed to Green Hills is being community. You know, I served a community of 30,000 residents, and they were all community. It was a department that community came first, that's who were serving, that's who were protecting, and it's your department, the community's department. It's not our department. If it wasn't for the community, we wouldn't exist, and I will never forget that. So I truly appreciate it. I wish I would have written a new stand. I didn't think it'd be like this. But I got a lot of friends, my father, Dad, stand up, you can do a try. Yes, you could say he's the reason I'm standing here, my dad. My late mom, unfortunately, I know she would be looking down right now very proud. She left us a little more than a year ago and a week, so, but I know she's very proud and it's very hard, actually, for this time that she's not here with us, but my mom also. I'd like to thank, you know, I got fellow chiefs, fellow cohorts sitting in the building that came out to support me. All the officers, I know you came out for Neil, but I'm glad. I do, I look forward to this. I look forward to working with all of you. If I'd heard of nothing but good things, trust me, if I heard bad things, I wouldn't be standing here. So, no, I appreciate everybody, all, everybody's reached out to me and the support. When we had to cook out and stuff, and there were probably coming up, I can truly feel it's the famine, and that's what I like about it. So I look forward to a long time, a long career here in Green Hills. We'll do everything to continue what Chief Fertleman did the last 10 years and build upon that. That's my job to do, and I appreciate the groundwork that he set in this whole process. And Avon, if you have any conversations in the interview with the mayor, I appreciate you for allowing this to happen, and I promise I'll do my best to make your own proud, do a member of us.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Actually, I guess if anybody wants to leave, they can.
Probably the only time I'll be able to.
You're welcome to stay.
Right, yeah. But thanks for coming.
I didn't know whether to announce the chief has cupcakes for people.
No, probably best even if we have some.
Moving on, we have no public hearings. Reports of municipal officials, municipal manager, Avon Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't prepare reports. Actually, it's been a little bit of a rough day thinking about chief leaving. So I just want to say a few words about the chief. It's been a wonderful and very, very fast 10 years. We can hardly believe it's
He's just been an amazing individual, as you know, but to work with him every day and learn from him and have his support, his knowledge, he gave freely of his time. I will miss him, but I will still look forward to all the pictures he sends me of those cute little granddaughters. And I really do feel very much that the staff here is a family, and he'll always be part of that.
All right. Thank you. Hey, law director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Really not much to report tonight. Again, we're enjoying the time of not being involved in any pending legal or court actions. You're enjoying that time. The only other thing I would mention, and it hasn't come into effect yet, but in October, there are going to be some changes to state law that may have an impact, really for the better for municipalities and some other political subdivisions. Essentially, and we're going to have to look at how this works along with our charter and things, but the bidding threshold, competitive bidding threshold is increasing, and we'll see how that impacts us. Also, with respect to when you go out to bid, there's a provision in the state law that says if the bids come back and they're more than ten percent over the estimated price, you have to reject all the bids.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, that is changing in October. That's going to change to give you a twenty percent overage, and I think that has to do with just the times that we're in now. It's much more difficult to get an engineer's estimate for a project, and if it doesn't happen tomorrow, actually have it come anywhere close to the estimate. So this is one time where it looks like the state is acknowledging the world that we live in and giving you the tools to address that. So none of that goes into effect until October. We'll be looking at how it may impact any of how we operate, but that'll be going across the board for most municipal corporations. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Clerk of council Teresa Lawley. Chief police acting, filling in, Brian.
Corporal Brian Johnson, filling in for retired Chief Fertleman. First, I would like to state from the department, we're going to miss him. He was a great, great man, great chief. I think myself, Tony, and Ann have been here for twenty-plus years, and the changes he brought to this department were great. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I remember when I started with you and where the department was at that time, and I never thought that we would get it to this level. And it's where it needs to be at right now, and I really think that with our new chief coming in, he's going to uphold those standards and keep us where we're at. So he is our full support.
Good.
But back to the minutes, yeah, last month was a busy month. We had the National Night Out, which we had a great turnout on. It's probably one of the best turnouts we've had in a long time for that event. And then we are looking for the Harvest Fest coming up. Speaking of the chief, I don't know if that's, some of you might be aware that he is a member of the Hamilton County Police Association's SWAT, and I think he's going to be able to bring some SWAT apparatus to that event. That'll be, that'll be nice, something different. Outside of that, we've had some training amongst some officers. We were able to get them away from the department and do some specialized training. And then the chief did request that, I guess he reads these stats every time, so he didn't want me to read these stats to you. During the month of July, the department made twelve criminal arrests, including a violation of a protection order, possession of drugs, and failure to appear. We responded to one hundred and seventy-two incidents, including thirty squad runs, seventeen parking complaints, seven warrants, six noise complaints, six checks on the well-being, six animal runs. We provided mutual aid in twenty-one instances. We issued forty-four traffic citations and forty-four traffic warnings, and we investigated eight traffic crashes. And that concludes the minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Great. And my report, I have the court checks to be issued to the state of Ohio, a thousand dollars. That's for the month of July. One thousand, one hundred and five dollars and ten cents. Hamilton County, forty-two dollars. And to the village of Green Hills, four thousand, fifty-one dollars and no cent. Also, I've decided to create a special committee to review the fire department contract and have asked Melanie Hermes to chair that committee and have asked Jack Lee and Rachel Hudson to serve on that committee with her while we review that forthcoming contract. And that's all I have. Reports of committees, recreation, cable television, Rachel Hudson.
For recreation, we still need to get together and schedule something. But for cable television, Waycross had their annual volunteer appreciation night, I believe it was August tenth, and that was a nice event to attend. They had some longtime volunteers that were there, one of which has a fascinating story that when he started volunteering with Waycross, he said that he was one day going to run cameras for the Bengals, and that's what he does. So just a friendly reminder that anybody can go there. I want to say that they don't allow volunteers under the age of twelve, but from twelve on up, anyone can go there, get training, and then volunteer to run cameras at local events and things like that. They allow you to produce your own shows. And then exciting news is that Dana Gagman, that we know as the government programming coordinator, was promoted to the executive director. So she's excited about that. Did I say that right? Yes. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I was like checking my notes. But she's excited about that. We all were excited on the committee, and Waycross is excited to promote her to that position, and they have a lot of fun things that they want to do, so we're just supporting them in that.
All right. Services and street Jennifer Osmondoglu.
Thank you. We have a committee meeting on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, and I prepared the agenda ahead of time just because there's so many things we need to discuss. And I have copies if you all want that. I just wanted to go over real quick what the highlights are, just so we can kind of, if there's something I'm leaving out, if you guys can let me know. We're going to go over the parking issues on Falcon, and, you know, hopefully we'll have, you know, we can set a date for a meeting and that kind of thing. The park, I don't know. Does the park fall in streets and services, or is it recreation?
You'll make that call.
She can have it.
Well, there's a few things about the park that I think that we should discuss, so I'll just, if I'm stepping on anyone's toes, I apologize, but.
It's acceptable.
Trees, the ongoing trees, and then all the stuff going on with Duke and the power lines and that kind of thing. I don't think they've, I haven't seen any more about power outages in the past week or so, so hopefully it's gotten a little better, but we can talk about that.
We'll see how they survive on Thursday's temperatures. We have brownouts or anything.
Did you see what I posted on Facebook, the information from Duke?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I did.
Okay.
Maybe I should do that a few times. Okay.
Yeah.
We got some good info back from Duke.
Oh, great. Good. Property maintenance and code enforcement, and our code enforcement officer.
He'll be there. Just try to get a copy of that, please.
Yeah.
The agenda.
Yeah. But I can admit it as necessary, if there's anything that anybody, you know, that I left out, I read it this afternoon, so I was like.
It's helpful.
Great.
And that's one o'clock.
One o'clock. Great. Is that still good for your schedule? That's pretty awesome.
Anybody else want to say something?
Okay, moving on, community development Jeff Holder.
Oh, okay, that was so quick.
I can say something about unification awards coming up. We have to set up a meeting.
Okay. All right. Safety Melanie Hermes.
Our safety committee meeting is on September twenty-sixth. I wanted to wait till the new chief was on board, so we will have that at five-thirty on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, and I will get with Jack and Rachel to discuss talking about the fire union and if we need to talk to Chief Spake as well. And of course, since it is a committee meeting of some sort, we will have it posted with plenty of notice, so even if it, some of it has to be done in an executive session, but we will still post notice. And speaking of safety or hot weather, I was wondering if for some reason, if there are some outages, would the municipal building be open for people who lose air conditioning or anything? I know we've done it in cold weather, but do we do it in hot weather, too?
We can if there's extended power outages and more than just like one.
Right.
A group, yes.
Okay. Just make sure if there is, let people know.
You bet.
Thank you.
Enter governmental affairs, laws and rules Maria Walther.
If we can have the joint meeting, but I cannot be here before six, so if we can start your, you know.
Safety committee meeting at six with laws and rules at six-thirty.
Yeah.
That it? Okay. Finance and audit Jack Lee.
Mr. Mayor, counsel at your place tonight are the financial general fund recaps for both the months of June, which was very active, and the month of July. So you can ruse and compare, but we'll focus on the July figures for the purposes of the report. Income, income tax continues in a positive direction, as does overall general fund revenues. The general fund balance at the end of July stands at two million, four thousand, one hundred and five dollars and six cents. That two million dollar figure has held up for the last four months that I've seen, and we seem to be stuck in a really good place there, so keep that up, Deb. The expenses, it was a busy month in July. There were no transfers for that. The appropriations as of the end of July had been spent forty-six point eight four percent. So, and as I mentioned, there were no transfers from the general fund, out of the general fund. So that's the end of my report. Unless you have any questions.
All right. This is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. This is the time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills and/or a non-resident, but nobody registered. We have no non-residents. State your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes. New business. We have no unfinished business. Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R twelve dash F, making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty-twenty-three, twelve dash F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers, whereas the two thousand twenty-three annual appropriations were adopted on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, are to be amended, and whereas the appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-seven oh five dot thirty-six A five. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the village Green Hills, Ohio, section one. Since certain actions are needed and the monies appropriated so as to permit the village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year two thousand twenty-three, the following items of expenditures are to be, are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year two thousand twenty-three. Fund description, Malloy's Banquet Hall, account number twenty-nine ten, original appropriation thirty-four thousand dollars. Change is an additional sixteen thousand dollars for a new total of fifty thousand dollars. Section two, monies following transfer funds made from previously appropriated monies, none. Section three, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, questions?
The sixteen thousand dollars is just to run the place.
Keep the building standing.
Does that include the roofs?
No.
That's a capital break, Deb?
Yes, it is.
And I think, I think it's on now. At least they started it.
They did. Yeah, they started, yeah.
Yay.
What company did we go with?
Malloy's.
Are you kidding?
That's their name, Malloy's.
Yeah.
Malloy's on the, mm, okay.
All right. Clerk of all the council.
Mr. Holder?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Ospinoz?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash twelve dash F passes. Next resolution, number twenty-twenty-three dash R thirteen dash S and S, resolution authorizing the assessment on certain properties in the village of Green Hills. Ms. Osmondoglu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R thirteen dash S and S, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the village of Green Hills, whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore the village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collected as other taxes. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, that the village council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative here to be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number five-nine-seven zero-zero-one-zero zero-zero-eight-three zero-zero. Address, six Engler Drive. Owner, Justin Cornell. Cost, two hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Parcel number five-nine-seven zero-zero-three-zero zero-zero-seven-seven zero-zero. Address, three-eighty-two Ingram Road. Owner, KTDJ Properties LLC. Cost, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents, for a total of three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-one cents. Section two, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the village of Green Hills. Section three, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Great. Clerk of all the council.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Herman?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Holder?
Aye.
Ms. Ospinoz?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R thirteen dash S and S passes. Next resolution. And next resolution is resolution number 2023-R14-SNS. Resolution authorizing the municipal manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contract as requ, contracts as required. Ms. Osmoglu.
Thank you. Resolution number 2023-R14-SNS. A resolution authorizing the municipal manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required. Whereas the state capital improvement program and the local transportation improvement program both provide financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to public infrastructure. And whereas the village of Green Hills is planning to make capital improvements to Damon Road, and whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the OPWC programs. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. That's section 1. Municipal managers hereby authorized to apply to the OPWC for funds as described above. Section 2, municipal manager is authorized to enter into any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Say anything.
I'll say, you know, thanks for adding it to the agenda. We won't meet again before the applications are due. And it, we had said yes to go ahead and submit for the municipal road funds, which does not require a legislation. Um, but if you're, if you succeed in getting money from the MRF fund, then typically they like to combine those ones with OPWC. So I figured it was an opportunity that better not pass by. So hopefully we'll be successful. That's the purpose of the, uh, process.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Since blacktop definitely isn't getting any cheaper.
And just so you know, I think you know this, that the, for the third round of the transportation infrastructure, we requested Farragut and Ingram. Those very big projects, but if we could get 75% of the funding, it'd be worth it.
Yeah. Okay. Clerk poll.
Is there a timeline on that?
Let's see. I think the, um, transportation wants to, I want to say late fall that they want to make decisions. MRF might be next, three.
Yeah.
I think that's a while. Five or three.
Okay.
Okay. Clerk poll the council.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Ospina, no, aye.
Ms. Herman?
Aye.
Okay. Resolute.
Ms. Walter? Aye.
All right. Resolution number 2023-R14-SNS passes. All right. That's it on, uh, council resolutions. Do we have any comments? Anybody wants to make? Counsel.
I know he's not here anymore to hear this, but I do appreciate all the time that Chief Frodmann has given and all of his dedication to the job. It was a pleasure working with him on the safety committee.
Right. Yes.
He's a good friend.
Yeah. Yeah.
He is.
Yeah. It was a privilege to know him. We're very lucky we had him.
Yep. Super guy. Did so much for us. Yep.
I also, I'm glad it, we got these typed up, the comments from the public hearing.
Yes. So, yes.
Okay.
To type them up. I don't have them. Oh, you mean from the minute. Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Wait for the [inaudible].
Okay. Uh, municipal calendar. Run that over again.
September 26th, safety committee.
We have a talk in the park on September 21st, 6 o'clock.
Streets and Services, Tuesday, August 29th, at 1:00 P.M.
And the nurses and the rides.
Didn't have any.
The hardest must stay.
October 7th.
Yeah. October 7th.
You know that.
Right. That's, that's for sure.
All right. Is that it? Okay. Uh, opportunity again for residents to appear before council. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident. Then state your comments. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Monique Mason-Holter, Queens, New York. At last month's meeting, I gave all of your copies of three articles that I stated together because they included information about US Conference of Mayors, National Native Cities, and National Native Townes' Opposition with HR 3557, American Broadband Act. The articles titles were US Conference of Mayors on Broadband, Yes to Money, and Local Control. House Committee Advances Communications Infrastructure Preemption Bill, and US House Committee Advances Bill for DUTS, Local Zoning and Community Input, Advanced Corporate Interest. I read excerpts from these three articles and asked you to contact Congressman Warren Davidson to request that he oppose this bill. I also asked you to contact the Hamilton County Commissioners and request that they contact Davidson to oppose this bill as well. I am hoping that some, if not all of you, have had time to do this. Anyone? Um, I still do that. As I stated at last month's meeting, if HR 3557 passes, it could have serious impacts on the village's finances. I have been attending most of the council meetings and work sessions for the past few years. One thing that I've noticed that you all have in common is that you all seem very concerned about the village's finances, current and future. Unless that has recently changed, it is in council's best interest to act on behalf of our village by contacting Congressman Davidson to ask that he oppose HR 3557, if for no other reason than it, than it could greatly affect the village's finances. I'm going to read again aloud excerpts from the articles that I provided to you as hard copies last month and read from at last month's meeting. This bill limits all local fees to a local government's objective, objectively reasonable cost. Would, unlike the current FCC rules, the local government must justify based on a complex rate-making formula. It preempts local government's rights of ways, compensation, and management authority concerning powers and property rights. It removes the ability of state and local franchise authorities to enforce cable franchises by eliminating cable franchise renewals, thereby removing the ability of state or local franchise authority to enforce franchise obligations such as PEG, customer service, and bill down. It grants a cable operator the right to terminate a franchise bill but creates no obligation to remove the cable system from rights of ways. It grants cable operators the right to provide non-cable services while prohibiting the counties from imposing any fees on cable operators for non-cable services. It imposes no obligations to those companies to provide broadband to unserved Americans. It would only subvert the intentions of historic federally-minded broadband programs by reducing the ability of counties to ensure deployment of projects to meet all community needs. It mandates that all wireless city decisions be, quote, deemed granted and, quote, if not acted upon by local governments within 60 days, whereas the federal government has 270 days to act on several projects. It provides no public safety protections for construction of, quote, deemed granted facilities. It may make sites be constructed, quote, without any further action by the government and, quote, without notice to the local government or obligation to comply with safety laws. It imposes artificially short timelines that are virtually impossible to meet, creates technical grounds for defeating non-completedness, notices that will pause the shot clock, and requires a local government to draft, publish, and deliver to an applicant on the same day that the local government by hears and votes on the application, a written denial decision with reasons. It empowers providers to install facilities where they choose regardless of local zoning, thus eliminating the ability of local government to balance providers and neighbor's interests while jeopardizing capacity of local governments to impose reasonable standards. HR 3557 waives historic reservation and environmental rules as well. Since council has been making great efforts.
Your four minutes is up. Sorry.
May I please finish? May I have permission to finish? I have three sentences left.
All right. Let's try to time it better the next time.
Since council began making great, uh, council has been making great efforts towards Green Hills historic preservation. That's another reason for council to take action against this bill. In addition to asking you to take action against this bill, I'm asking again that you strengthen the Green Hills small cell facilities ordinance. Other obligatory necessities have passed more protective ordinances. Our ordinance is not going to protect us from the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities and the installation of high-grade industrial infrastructure.
I do actually have one question. You mentioned a vote. Do you know when they're voting on this bill?
No. You have time. I hope you will contact Congressman Davidson as well as the Hamilton County Commissioners. Have any of you read those articles that I provided to you or copies last month?
Yes.
I did. Yes, I did.
Have any of you contacted Congressman Davidson?
I will be seeing him on Sunday, actually.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thanks. Hey, anybody else?
I'm hoping it won't be a problem if I, I'm so grateful you guys let Paula speak a little bit earlier. Can I give you a quick update on her?
Sure.
Of course.
Okay.
Lovely. Thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to say, of course, that back to school, kiddos start back on Monday. But the library does have a lot of different resources to help them out from getting a library card, and that could be for anybody, all ages, teachers, students. We can help. And if you're like, I'm not sure about my account status, just stop in and let us know because we do fix a lot of different things. So, um, you may be able to do, check out materials or have a good standing account even if you're afraid that you didn't bring that book back 10 years ago. Essential limitations is fine. We also have Homework Help Now, which is a, an online tutor-based program where you can get help from kindergarten with your adults from two to eleven P.M. every day a week. And that uses chat technology and other, you know, web magic to connect people with tutors in that particular grade level and area throughout the country.
What's it called again?
It's called Homework Help Now, and it's available on our website. You just need a library card to access it. And that's, of course, free of charge for anybody. So there will also be homework help enrichment aids at several of our libraries, but they're still working on finalizing where those will be hiring that staff. So I believe Horace Parker will be one of them, but it's not quite there yet. So if you check our website, you can get more information for an actual in-person enrichment or homework help experience. We're also having a really exciting open house on Saturday, September 23rd, Vault 4, and that's celebrating all of you, our customers. So we would love to be able to highlight some of the things the library does. We'll have some refreshments. We'll have library prizes. You can get to know your library staff a little bit. You can find out what our favorite pizza toppings are. I know you're burning about that. But we're gonna have a lot of fun, and that's all throughout the afternoon. So please stop by at Point. And the Cincinnati Observatory will be coming at 2:00 that day to do an hour-long presentation on all the eclipses that will be coming up and help name work and all the science things with that. And that's for all ages, so we hope to see everybody there at that one. Our Nonfiction Book Club is going to be on Thursday, September 7th, at 3:00 P.M., and we're going to be discussing the house, Origins of Our Discontent by Isabel Wolkerston, who is the library's Mary S. Stern lecture guest this year. And if you would like to have a chance to see her in person, she will be, the Stern lecture is on Thursday, October 5th, at 7:00 P.M. If you want tickets, they're available online at $5, $10, or $50 apiece. We're having a wall plant swap, so if you're cleaning up the garden and you have some things. It's going to be on Saturdays, September 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00. We're also going to have kind of an herbal program to create your own no-salt substitute, and that's on the ground Tuesday, September 19th, at 6:30. Teens can knit paracord bracelets all Wednesday, September 25th, at 4:00. Sign up because I only have enough for 12, so. And kids can create a dandelion painting on Tuesday, September 12th, from 4:30 to 5:30. And they can also program Ozobots, which are these little cool robots that follow a track that you draw. And they do some computer coding and everything on Tuesday, September 26th, from 4:30 to 5:30. We'll close Labor Day. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
And I also wanted to mention, our Girl Scouts did a campout, and we were able to borrow a telescope. We couldn't get it from the Green Hills Library. We had to get it from the Northwest Library, but you can check it out like you check out a book. It's a shorter turnaround. It's due sooner, but it, it was a nice telescope, and the girls enjoyed using it. So I.
This observatory helped us get a lot of those to be able to learn.
It was really neat. So, thank you.
I'm so glad that was useful. They had a good time.
They did.
They did. All right. Is that it? Okay. Meeting adjourned.